Alright, so it's April 8th. It's 2:50 PM. And I am going to the assessor of property. To get a GSI survey. I just left the bid opening for the New Hamlin County Taj Mahal Jail Justice Center. Low bid came in at eighty-three million dollars. So that's eighty-three million and we're gonna go to floor number thirty. Eighty-three million dollars is a lot of money for someplace that will probably be outgrown. And can't do any kind of expanding on in forty years. That's a big issue. So we got the register of deeds, assessor of property, public restrooms. So let's go to the assessor of property.
I don't hear you.
I'm doing good. Hey, is this where I come to get a GSI survey? To see what property lines are?
The tax map.
Alright, well, it'll tell me, well, it'll tell me the footage. I need footage like off of the public street.
Let me, what's the address? And I can show you what I can give you.
It's gonna be part of the farmer's market on the corner of Morris Boulevard and Cumberland where that little sign is right there that says welcome to downtown Morristown. That's what I want, like the piece, the property that include, will include that. In the little public area strip that would run along Morris Boulevard and along Cumberland. One would end at whatever property would be for the PetSmart. And then the other one would be the entrance right there.
Give you a copy of the map I have.
Okay.
For that word?
Yeah. So that's the section of property we're interested in. Is right there where the signage is. And the reason for that is Rob Berkey had posted his political signs that he is running for council member of the city of Morristown. You gotta check him out. He's a, he's a good one to have. He's definitely for the people. And there is a photograph of a gentleman. I'm not gonna give you the name now. And taking those political signs. And there's proof that he took them through the picture. And also that he replied back via a text message to Rob Berkey. In regards to the throwing that sign away. So we are gonna find out what the property line is over there and see whether or not that sign was on public property or private property. And I've already looked it up online, but that may not be accurate. So that's why we're here at the assessor of property. And to gather that information. Because if nobody else knows, then no one's gonna know. Hopefully it'll have some kind of feet from the curb. That way we could accurately measure. These ladies got a beautiful view. Look at that window. Awesome view. And it's funny, the mayor is stuck in the basement. Well, huh. It's where he should be. While we're waiting. The assessor of property. Office hours, eight AM to four thirty PM, Monday through Friday.
Here's the tax map to that area. Right there's the farmer's market, okay?
Okay.
And here's this Pet Sense.
Yeah.
Talking about the buildings that's right back in here. And there's that little fountain. It used to be the fountain sign.
Right.
Right there. So that that's what I'm about to say. That's such a small lot. I printed the card off for you for this Pet Sense.
Okay.
The reason I did that, when they bought that, there was a survey done. Okay, J three eighteen. That survey will give you all the dimensions on this lot.
Okay.
So that way it's very easy to figure out what this dimensions is right here, which is very, very small. It's just like twenty feet by seventy-two around through there, but.
Right.
So what you can do is go down the next window down here and tell them you need a copy of this survey.
Okay.
And that'll give you all the information you need for this piece right here.
Awesome, man.
See what I'm saying?
I got you.
And that way, I mean, it's just easy to figure out what this.
Yeah, because, and this is what we're talking about right here, guys. So, because I know that from like here to, it kind of runs like kind of at an angle almost to just the side of the building that's behind Pet Sense.
Yeah, you see the line comes here because it widens out when it gets right.
Yeah.
Winds, winds back out and then goes up to the Morris Boulevard right there.
Yes.
It narrows back down from this point down here. It narrows back down to the river.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Saying?
Yep.
And there was an offset also back here on the back line next to that river.
Perfect.
So this, this, this survey will give you what you need for everything in there.
Awesome. Hey, I appreciate it. And what was your name? Hey, thank you very much for your professionalism. You have a good one. Alright, that's the second time I've talked to that man and he was helpful with the first time I talked. Awesome guy. I give him thumbs up on that. I did it because it says ring bell for help. I didn't do it just to do it. Don't jump all over me. Jim Coster. Thank you for giving this place clean. Looks great.
Thank you.
Registered deeds. So the Hamlin County mask mandate has been lifted. So it is by choice. You can see some still wear them. Others do not. That's how it should have always been. Jim Coster. One of the registered, just there. He's the Hamlin County Register of Deeds Register. You can reach us four two three five eight six six five five one. Come visit him. When I came in to the assessor of property. The last time I had to come here to get a map too and they hooked that up, no problems. Very professional. Got me the information I needed. They got some paper right here about the veteran outreach. Senior citizens home assistance service. Veterans Outreach, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at the Tennessee Army National Guard. Located at fifty-two fifty-five East Andrew Johnson Highway, Russell, Tennessee. Between ten AM and two PM. There will be information about programs for veterans and their spouses. For more information. Call four two three five eight six two three five nine or four two three two three one five seven five three three. You can have food, fun, fellowship, door prizes. This event is for everyone, not just veterans and spouses. To help keep everyone safe here. Ask everyone to please wear a mask. So, hey, go check that out. April twenty-third. Little stack of stuff over here. Let's see what this one has. Morristown Sentinel, eighteen eighty-five nineteen fifty-five. So is there anybody to help me or? Here comes Jim. I'm doing good. How you doing? Good. I needed to get a map of this property here. I'm doing wonderful out there. It stopped raining for a little bit, I guess. At least it didn't come down hard. It was just a little drizzle.
Um, negative flat on that.
Yeah. It, well, it's the, that's actually the PetSmart. Alright, so moving right here. Okay. Twelve, yeah, so I can see the, the, um, the footage. That's what I'm interested in to see what the footage is from the sidewalk or the street curb.
You go ahead. We're waiting for an over in. You've got business.
Hi. My mom died about a month ago. And we've already gone downstairs to start the probate process with, from the will. How do I find out when the property that was willed to me gets put in my name?
Probate's filed over there.
I'm sorry?
The probate is filed in clerk and master.
Okay.
You get certified copy of it, you bring it up.
There's a lot to the first spot.
Oh, okay. So you just need a certified copy of what I got from the clerk's office over there and then the will. Great. I'll bring it right back up. Thank you so much.
Cindy is out sick today and I need a witness in the notary.
Um, it's gonna be the corner of
I can be the other one.
South Cumberland and Morris Boulevard. Right there where that city of Morristown signage is.
Okay. Alright, well, we're just. Alright, I love you. Don't worry, I'm just taking.
Yeah, South Cumberland and Morris Boulevard.
Wait, wait until the other witness comes over.
Low way down through there.
What's that?
Low way down through there.
No, just right there at the corner. There's a, it says welcome to downtown Morristown. There's a sign that's there. And then there's two strips that include after that, that are public property. Yes.
Yes, you can.
Yes, yeah. This one?
That's the corner.
Yeah, yep.
That's eighty-nine, eighty-nine.
So look at this guy. He's helping me out. Customer service.
Witness on that one.
Yeah, she's got the sign first.
Alright.
According to the line tape.
Okay, and this is the center, line center of the road? That's where the separate directions are.
Yeah, that's eighty-nine, looks like eighty-nine feet from that corner of that lot to the center of the road.
Okay. Yep. Okay, yeah, alright. So that's the center line of the road. So it's forty feet from the center line of the road.
Around that curve, seventy-two. Four, six feet around the curve.
Okay.
See three?
Yeah.
Three, and you go to the table and he gives you, gives you the link.
Alright, does your computer tell you, this is the curb, I would assume of the street right here? Does it say like what the distance is from here to here? Like from the curb? That would be actually like the public strip where a sidewalk would be. Right, so forty. So I guess this comes pretty straight from there at that point, it looks.
That's from the corner of the property to the center of the road, I guess. I don't know what the pavement is on that.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
No, I typed the other dates in.
South Cumberland Street, right of way. Right of way, forty. Okay, you got. It's like maybe forty from each side. From the center line, either way. That's forty.
Well, like right there, it breaks into turn, you know, you got two, a turn lane, two straight lanes there. Hey, I appreciate what you're doing. I gotta be accurate in what I'm trying to achieve here.
Get there, send there a tag.
Appreciate you, Brandon. Thank you very much.
For the right of one. It's like forty foot of pavement. That right of ways.
Alright, so it's sixty feet, not forty feet, like what's.
You may have forty feet of pavement. You may have twenty feet. You got, you have sixty feet. Pavement could be forty. Could be fifty. I don't know. How wide that pavement is.
Okay.
They got sixty feet.
Alright, alright. So there's at least twenty feet worth of grass that belongs.
Twenty could be ten. I just don't know how wide the pavement is.
Okay, alright. So it'd be sixty, sixty feet from the center line. So if there's forty feet of pavement, there's twenty feet.
You got, go to the center, thirty foot each way. That's how the best way to do it. From the center of South Cumberland. Thirty foot. Sixty feet. They got sixty feet.
Okay.
And the road may be forty, maybe fifty foot of pavement.
Okay, alright. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and measure that up. Hey, Jim, I appreciate your professionalism. Thank you very much. Have a good one. Alright, so this is what we were looking at right over here and the amount of footage coming from the center line of the road in either direction. So now we can go and see whether or not the political sign was on public property or private property. We'll go ahead and I'll edit these two videos back together and bring you one when I get some information. Thanks for watching. Today is April eighth, twenty twenty-one. It is five PM. I am standing out in front of the Pet Sense. Which is located on the corner of Cumberland Avenue and Morris Boulevard. And I'm here today because it's been brought to my attention of a possible theft of political signs. Here you see two. And there's supposed to be three. Rob Berkey is running for city council for the first ward against Bob Garrett. And he had his political sign out here. I saw when I passed by the other day. And he also had one on the other side of the property over here. Well, the picture shows an individual which has been identified and has has said that he has, did throw it away. But I have this GSI survey right here and this is the corner of interest right here. And you can see that there's sixty foot right of way from the center line of the road. That's the center of the road. They got sixty feet. So I know that they're well in six, within sixty feet. So on this side, you could see as well that there's a good distance in. So what am I talking about? Talking about this sidewalk right here. Okay, so this sidewalk is only a portion of what the city actually owns. It actually comes way back over according to this GSI survey to about right here where I'm standing. So if you see both of these signs that are still here are on public property. This is not private property. This is public property owned by the city of Morristown. You can see it right there. You see how the line is and how it comes across? Okay, so to about this point here. And his sign was way over here. It was about, almost split the difference of where that, between those two signs. So let's walk to the other side. And we're gonna see if we can't measure off. Now we're just gonna do it quickly with steps. Um, my average step is about three feet. So we're gonna see within general. And if it comes up to inches, then I'll come back this evening when there's less traffic. So this is the area that we're talking about. Okay, that you can see on the map. And his other sign was over here. Okay, so this right here, you can see the city pole. Right, so the city does not put utilities on public property. Or I'm sorry, on private property. So I would assume that it's gonna be pretty much about up to this lineage right here of where the road frontage is. So I guess one way of me being able to do that would be to. of me being able to do that would be to walk this crosswalk, which is green, and then I'm gonna measure it out when I get to the center point. So let's do that. And we're gonna have sixty feet from, which will be this point right here, the midpoint of the intersection. I'll show you that here, okay, so I walked all the way across. I have seventeen seconds, I'm gonna go ahead and walk back across. Let this guy go if he's gonna go. Okay, so sixty feet is what we have. Sixty feet from the center line, so we got three, six, nine, twelve, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-four. Okay, so right here, we are at thirty-two feet to this section right here, so really we've got, according to this, almost another thirty feet to go. So let's see where that would take us. About right here. About right here, so this is about where the property line would be. And if you look at it, okay, so we're looking at it like this. And if you see how it goes straight and then it ducks out to the right, so the closer to the far sign out here, the closer to the road the actual property line is. Well, pretty much where we just measured has a right of way of sixty feet in accordance to this. So, anything from that center line, and we're gonna go ahead and we'll be walking out on this other side over here so we can actually see. So, we're gonna see how much, how far out they own from here. We got some traffic coming, so let's give the traffic a chance to come by and then we are gonna see from the center line over here, which is gonna be the double line. Right there, it'll be the double line. And we will see how far that's gonna be. Okay, we got a couple more vehicles coming. Forty feet. So let's see, let's go down here real quick. Three, six, nine, twelve, fifteen. Thirty-four, so we're at thirty-four feet straight to the curb. So at thirty-four feet, um, could have at least, at least a minimal of another six, he said sixty feet, so this is thirty-four. So forty feet is gonna be to the edge of the sidewalk, and then there's gonna be, according to this, another twenty feet, so. Eighteen, twenty feet, so this is where twenty feet brings me, right here, so. Yep, just like I said, look. Lines up straight with that over there, so anything to the left of, the left of the pillar is public property. And that's where this sign and his signs were located. So, this person um, that owns this property, and I'll tell you his name, um, once I get everything squared away, took this Rob Berkey sign so that these signs can stay, and that's all in a text message. And he said it was so that his lawn guys didn't have to weed eater mower around them, but this lady here and Bob Garrett. And Bob Garrett, see this is electric, right, this is put in by the utilities, this is a right of way. This is not part of the property. Okay, so Bob Garrett is also buddies with this person that took this political sign. So they left these two, but took Rob Berkey's. What does that say? Now, I'm not saying that either of these two here have anything to do with it. But I'm not saying that they don't. But somebody's going around taking signs, and I can tell you that definitely this guy here does not deserve to be sitting on that city council. Case center. Uh, I, I don't have nothing, uh, dislike against her. Um, but if Bob Garrett, he's bad news. He needs to go. Rob Berkey, for the people, all day long. So, we need somebody that's gonna get in there, gonna listen to what the citizens bring to these meetings. And if, uh, it's warranted to look into a matter and it justifies making a change, then a change needs to be made. So, thank you for joining another Lakeway audits video, and, uh... See, I actually think like this sign right here is actually looking at the track map right here. Runs straight along with this road, so the, the leg that's holding up this sign to the far right should be just about on the property line. Runs right to here, and here's your corner, right here. So, I'm gonna end this, thanks for watching, vote for Rob Berkey, he's the man for the job. He wants to know what you're thinking, what your concerns are, what your issues are, and we have a lot of them. There's a lot, a lot of problems, and there's a lot of people that have good ideas and recommendations, but there's nobody to listen to it and pass those. Rob Berkey, vote for him, for city commission or city council. I'm gonna go ahead and speak with him and get the information that I need from him and, um, get the photos that I gotta get and some other information. I'll put that all in this video and get it on out to you. Thanks for watching.